Right, good boy. Good Christmas. That's so true.
Audrey? Can you hear us, Audrey?
I can hear you. Oh, yeah, there's the door. I can hear you.
Ready? Ready? Good evening and welcome to tonight's work session. About that, we'll talk about that. Got a special meeting first. Roll call, please.
Stefano?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Griego?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
You said this is a special meeting for one item. We've got roll call so far. Item one, a special event permit request for all venus and spirituous application filed by Trinidad, Los Angeles County, expanding Chamber of Commerce at 201 West Main Street on September the 18th, 2021. Entertained motion, please. Second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Mr. Williamson? Ogletree?
I had a little hard time understanding the map. How this is going to be... Is it contained entirely in fencing or something? Or how?
Yes. It'll have to be with the plastic fencing, the rubber or whatever it is, but yes.
Okay, and are you going to maintain ADA access around it or through it?
Yes.
Okay, I can see where that was explained in there. And what is your security plan?
We are going to have an exit on the north side of the park and an entrance on Main Street. And also to have the local police department oversee if they can. If not, make arrangements for other security. We've done that in the past with the Trinidad Police Department.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. DeBon, do you have any questions? No, I don't, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Griego?
No, sir.
Ms. Shu?
No, none.
How about Mr. Goodall? Do you have any questions?
No questions, Mayor.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. Call board, please.
Stefano?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Stefano?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, we are now on to the regular work session of September 13th, 2021. The time is now 5:00, at 6:00 p.m. We have three items on tonight's agenda. Item one is a 2021 season end update by Monument Lake Resort, Brett McGraw, Buckhorn Ridge Outfitters LLC. Item two, Trinidad Community Foundation Grant Allocation Review and Report. Item three, Workforce Housing and Development Centers Program Kickoff Meeting. And item four, which usually just is a discussion of maybe other agenda items that council wants to talk about. Let's begin with item one, 2021 Season End Update. Monument Lake Resort to Brett McGraw, Buckhorn Ridge Outfitters LLC. Mr. McGraw, I hope that you've had a good first season up there and we'll give you the floor, please.
Well, we have had a great season out there. And I was talking to Mr. Valentine here a week or two ago. And just felt like it was a big good time for us to reach out and give you guys a report of how well things went. Just by the numbers so far, and we're not done yet, but we've had over 7,200 visitors to the resort. We've done over 12,000 transactions on the retail side. And we've done over, just almost 7,200 bookings. That's hotel cabins, campsites, pontoons, paddleboards, all the water activities that we have out there. It's been honestly better than I expected. We've just enjoyed ourselves immensely getting to serve people. Met a lot of great people out there. Met a lot of people that have gone out there for 50, 60, 70 years. Met a wonderful older woman. She's 84 years old. She's born the year that opened, and she's been going there her whole life. So got to learn a lot of history from the people that have been going there, you know, all their life and through the generations. So we've, like I said, it's been an incredible experience. We got to do a lot of good improvements, I feel like, you know, in a very short period of time. And we've continued to improve throughout the season. Just coming in, we replaced all the mattresses, all the bedding, all the light fixtures, all the sink fixtures. Put a shower or two here and there, you know, just a lot of odds and ends. In the restaurant, we pretty well updated the whole kitchen with new stones and cooktops and freezer refrigerators and cookware. Had an opportunity to buy some really cool art there at the Museum of Western Art in Trinidad. So we have that hanging in the restaurant as well. We've had some great entertainment out there this year. The first entertainer we got out there was Ward Davis and Esther McGraw. Ward is a national recording artist, very well-known in the country music world. We've had Whiskey Creek, who's local, I'm sure you guys know that guy. And they're coming out again this weekend to help us close the resort down on Saturday night. We've had Captain Reed out. Red Shayhand, the country artist, came out and him and I got to know each other very well. And he was just enthralled over the beauty of that place. So it's a very special place. We're extremely grateful to you all for giving us the opportunity and trusting us to get out there and try to do some good. And I really believe that, you know, I've heard a lot, I mean countless times, people have been going out there for 30, 40, 50 years and said they've never seen it this nice. So we're headed in the right direction, so.
Well, I just wanted to read this to you. We got this letter from a lady. She sent us, City of Trinidad, of course, 135 North Adamant Street. City manager or Department of Tourism, dear sir or ma'am. Now, this is my sister, Eileen McFall, from Denver, and I, from Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Stayed at Monument Lake Resort nearly every year and nearly every summer for a few days. It's been a tradition for a lot of our family members, but with COVID and health issues, Eileen and I went alone this year. We wanted to let you know that we found the park, the cleanest and well-cared-for that we've seen it. And the manager, Brett McGraw, was the most helpful. So just let you know, besides what you heard, I've got a little bit more here to give you the finished letter here. An hospitable manager we've ever had, the pleasure of dealing with. The motel was not full when we arrived in our rooms here, located where we would have had to carry our luggage and fishing equipment a long ways. We mentioned it and he checked and quickly gave us another available room other than where we could park near the door. Everyone was super helpful and kind and we felt that our patronage was appreciated. That has never been, to care than to care any other years. Perhaps we went at a busier time, but we so enjoy spending our money here, many there, for the super clean rooms and at the great restaurant with such a fast and friendly cook and staff. Even the young woman at the bait shop loaned me a can of window cleaner for my buggy windshield. Who does that? Well, we will return next summer if the gracious Lord allows. Please pass our respects to the staff and Monument Lake Park. Thank you. Gwen Fisher. So just to let you know that we got that letter from someone and you heard that firsthand evidently from other people. Want to say congratulations on a good year. Council have any questions? Mr. DeBon?
Just a fascinating, phenomenal turnaround from years past. Appreciate it, Brett. God bless you guys. Keep up the great work.
Ogletree?
Thank you.
It is beautiful and you're doing a great job. When is the schedule for when you do the final report for each year? Is that not till the winter or when do you do that?
I'm sorry, I can hear you very well.
I was asking, when the financial report that you all provide to us, when will that come?
Well, so we'll finish our season up on the 19th, which would be Sunday. I would ask that I have at least a month to prepare the, you know, the final report and then I'd be happy to submit it to you guys.
All right, I was just curious. Thank you so much.
Williamson?
I have no questions. I did want to thank you for your commitment to deliver what you promised. We really appreciate it. I found the place to be a really a pleasure to visit this summer.
Ms. Griego?
I had no doubt, Mr. McGraw, from the information you gave us when you put in your application for the lease, that you would be successful. I had no doubt from that day forward. I have gone up there a couple of times and I'll tell you, I couldn't even find one piece of trash anywhere and the park was full. It was before Labor Day and I was just amazed. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Ms. Shu?
Thank you.
I agree with all the council, being up there, you've done a great job. Just get some bigger fish next year.
I tell you, they've just been fishing there. So I need to check with CPW, but I swear that we're up in the neighborhood of 30,000 fish. Sure. That they brought up. I mean, it's been, you know, every other week there for a while, they were bringing, you know, truckloads of 6,000 fish just nonstop. Hey, there's some big fishing out. I ran into this guy from Oklahoma last Saturday. They had three five-pound bream in their pipe. So they're in there.
Mr. Goodall, any questions?
Mr. McGraw, thank you so much. You thanked the city and I don't want to say thank you. You delivered everything you promised. I was up there many times. The food was always amazing, visiting the little gift shop, bait shop. It just looked magnificent. Your staff that was there was always top-notch. Thank you, sir. My only question to you is, are you still as enthusiastic as when you started? And are you still as optimistic about the futures you were when you started?
As far as enthusiasm goes, I'm off the charts right now. I'll be honest with you. I think that we're headed in a direction for that park and that resort that is going to, you know, surpass any of my expectations and hopefully yours as well. So I might, you know, it's like I tell everybody that I talk to, you know, whenever I leave there, all I can do is think about getting there. And whenever I get there, all I want to do is stay. You know, I'm absolutely in love with it. And we put everything we have into it, but we'll continue to. Financially, I would say that we are going to come up short from what my projections are in year one, but I'm still extremely satisfied with, because I think we were coming out of a pretty deep hole. And I'm still, we're going to be extremely satisfied with our final numbers on the deal.
Fantastic. So much, sir.
Any questions or? No questions, just comments that Mr. McGraw called me here a couple of weeks back and I had no occasion to call him where in the past and it was nothing but complaining. I've been up there a couple of times. It's fantastic. I appreciate the work and look forward to, you know, continued operations up there with you in charge. Thank you. Brett?
Thank you, sir.
Brett, thank you for everything that you've done this season and good luck to you next year. And we'll be seeing you in the near future when you bring your final report for this year. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
On to item two, the Trinidad Community Foundation Grant Allocation Review and Report. Colonel Simpelman, what do you have for us?
I sent out a report. We got the report or our final recommendation for allocation. And I did a summary for the whole year so you know what the city has done for the year. I think the report is pretty explanatory, but let me just go over it and you may have a question. There was, what happened is as we went through and we finished, everybody got what they wanted with the exception of one request, we had $4,690 left over, I think it was. So that's, you know, we don't want that money sitting in our account and I know you, the council doesn't want that either. So we went back and we looked at the request for Artokate, the Mitchell Museum, and Earth Mountain, all who had a budget that exceeded their request and who allocated that money, 4,000 of it. And then we would ask that $690, we would like to do that because I want to... The one thing I would like to be able to do better is for the smaller 501(c)(3)'s that are intimidated and they just don't feel like they want to write that report. We want to do some more training and provide them tools so that they can report. And we don't ask for an awful lot like your financial report. We just want some, we want confidence that they spent the money the way they said they would. And so with that, we'll be able to create some automatic. In fact, I created a web sheet that's fine for me, but I'm going to make it friendly enough for inexperienced people to do. We, all of the requests were worthy and good. We actually visited some of them to see, you know, what they're doing, confirm that things are going well. The only issue, it's not an issue. The only thing we asked to change was the Preparatory Watershed Partnership wanted money for, to buy two trash cans for the city. Then they were going to give them back to the city to install, you know, along the riverwalk. And it just didn't make sense for us to give them city money so they could buy your trash cans and they give it back to you and install them along the riverwalk. We thought that that was probably, could be done better. And then they're going to have a Bear Education Day, which Colorado Parks and Wildlife is going to do that. So when we looked at the grant request, in phase one, back in January, we did, we gave a grant to the Perjury Trout Unlimited for a river project, was to educate the children, you know, put the fish in and all. And they had not spent their money yet. They were doing it with $1,750. So what we would like to do is we'll reduce Preparatory Watershed Partnership. And there's the $250, that would give, and then they combined for one day to have a really good river event. And then we'll make it a trio, we will use community foundation funds to buy a couple bicycles for kids to go and bring their parents along. And we'll give away a girl's bike and a boy's bike to make it really a nice river event. But it seems reasonable to have one day where you have a lot of people and activity and accomplish all the goals. I think that's it. If there's any questions. But I'm sorry, I should have told you this, but when you look at the summary for the year, it turns out that we gave $53,360 worth of grants to nonprofits. So that's pretty dug on good. 27 grants.
No questions, just a big thank you, Colonel, to you and Lisa Camarillo for being so concise and organized all the time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ogletree?
Absolutely agree. Thank you. I love this report too because it really shows how, while you're thinking through what they're asking and asking them questions back and you're doing an enormous help for our city and our city staff to do that.
I have to measure one thing. We had to reach out and read the first cycle we did not give them because we just didn't have a good feel. So I called up, still didn't get a good feel. So we actually went to the doctor's offices where they give the books to the kids and went to county house and a young lady there, Jennifer Sanchez McDonaldson. I mean, she was so enthusiastic about it. Changed my mind. I went 180 degrees and I said, absolutely. And we parlayed that into, they're looking at giving 55% more books, you know. So it's tough. It was good, but reaching that really helped them.
And I absolutely think what your idea to do with that little bit of extra money is a great idea and it's really needed in this community. Because I think a lot of our nonprofits miss out on grant opportunities because they just don't know how to ask. It's a tough thing to do. So I think that's a great idea.
No questions. Definitely appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colonel, do you keep track of the number of years that you give? How many years you give consecutively to each?
To each, you know, by, you know, we know that. I mean, you know, we have that. And the answer is, we can produce that. Okay, yeah, if you wanted that, we can go down because we have that information. And, you know, we just know everybody is down with it. Last year, we did this with them. And then surprisingly, there's some that normally request, and we didn't get those requests this year. So, you know, and I really want to reach out to the smaller, that's my... And we don't ask for a lot. I mean, we just want a simple report that they spent the money like they said they would. We'll make it happen.
No, echoing council person Ogletree's comments, these reports are fantastic. It kind of gives us a good idea of where it's going and what it's going for.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah, same. Good job. Thank you. You really did a good job for the city. I think all the people really appreciate it, especially the crew you have.
Thank you.
And you're always welcome at the radio station to share all the information.
We rely on you.
Rusty, you're muted.
You're muted.
All right, there we go. I just want to say thank you to the Trinidad Community Foundation. It is a great job y'all are doing and what a relief to staff for something that they don't have to deal with. Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you.
I have everybody else's comments and I do believe that additional money would be well worth doing some training for, as you mentioned, the smaller nonprofits because they're intimidated when they see paperwork like that. It would be a big help to them. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item number three, Workforce Housing and Development Centers Program Kickoff Meeting. Mayor, if you recall, we engaged with Mr. Hyrum here. He's sat with us before. He's been working with Sky. It's been good to have Sky on board, so they're going to kind of pick your brain, I think.
We sure are.
Audrey, I think there's a, if you could share the screen with the PowerPoint?
All right, here we go. So Michael and I will kind of present the first few slides here and then we'll show you what we're thinking about and engage you on the beginning of what's going to be probably about a four-month-long process of looking at a menu of different incentives that the city could pursue and really looking to you guys for direction and whittling that list down of all the possible incentives out there and really what the city wants to focus on. Next slide, Audrey.
Sky, can you hit the single box up there so that?
This?
No.
This one? Oh, this box, yeah.
Nope. That one. Yeah, and then kind of, there we go.
So just a little overview, what we're going to look at tonight is, Michael's going to give you a little bit of a crash course. He's got a big, a great broad background in doing housing incentive work. So he'll talk to you about housing incentives, what kinds of incentives are out there, what those different sorts of programs look like. We'll talk about establishing our goals as a city. And we'll look at a number of examples of incentive programs, zoning policies, administrative considerations for housing administration, and then our next steps as a city. Will be how we end off tonight. Next slide, Audrey. So like I mentioned, we expect to finish up around January with this process. This is the first of two work sessions that we'll have with you. We are going to look to you for guidance if our next work session may be done in conjunction with county commissioners. That's a consideration. It may be worthwhile. There may be other considerations that you have that you want to just keep it city-specific, but it may be something that we look to the county to collaborate on. And we are also going to do some stakeholder outreach interviews in a public meeting. We'll go over the details of that a little bit later. And the final report, that's one of the slides towards the end of the slide show, is what our final product will look like here. And how does a housing needs assessment work with this process? So we're going to come up with five-year housing goals, development strategies, organization management for administrative oversight of housing program, and city-led incentive program funding options.
Thanks, Guy. Next slide. Oh, these are the goals. So we'll revisit these goals at the end and you'll have a little, you have, well, you have a soup, I always call it a sushi menu. If you've ever been to a sushi restaurant, you know how to order sushi, put a X next to what you want. That's why I call it a sushi menu. I'm going to say hi to everybody on Zoom real quick to see if you can see me. I exist. You know, one real quick clarification, the housing, so you guys have two parallel processes going on. You announced the housing needs assessment. I think it's important to differentiate what I'm doing versus that because what's nice is you actually are going to pop out of this process at the same time of knowing what the needs assessment identifies as the actual needs. So that needs assessment is going to tell you, you need X number of units at this AMI, X number of rental units. Here's the five-year, 10-year projections of job demand that's going to create housing. And so what's going to be great is you guys are going to have gone through all the different ways with this process of how you actually produce housing, right? So that when you actually get that final report and there's, you know, when I was in the Guns and Valley, it was like 850 units needed in one year. All right, good luck, right?
And actually, maybe we have three parallel processes going on because we have this one, Housing Needs Assessment. And then I'm going to be working with you guys on looking at zoning code reforms. And either today or tomorrow, a survey is going out to the community to try and get community feedback on values related to land use. So, you know, we're trying to hit the incentives, the code-based approaches to housing and the housing needs. So we're really hitting it from all sides here.
And we will talk about some of those code items tonight too. I am a big goals guy and I hate to, I don't like to be the, like, fluffy fluff-fluff. But if you don't know what you're going for, it's really hard for me to help you out. And so I am going to ask that we spend some time tonight to talk about like, what do we really want to achieve? Right? And set those five years' goals. I will visit them every time and I will tell you that in my, in the years I've built housing, when you stay on, when the council stays on goal focus, it really helps the staff because you guys are going to have to make some very difficult choices in the next four months. And we talk about this because I hate to tell you, you're not going to be able to do everything. And you guys have a finite amount of money and every housing project you do is only going to solve one of your housing issues. There is no magic... There is no magical housing project. There is no state entity that's going to come in here and solve your problems. The folks in this room are truly going to, you know, have to roll up their sleeves and do it. And so we have to stay targeted. We have to stay focused and we have to make sure that we are targeting what you guys want to achieve in the next five years and being realistic with what those goals are. Because there's again, a finite amount of money that we can throw towards this, right? Uh, next slide. This is a great, we're a staff of four and what I will tell you is I'm probably not your typical consultant. I come from 15 years of municipal government. I've worked basically at Sky for the last 15 years as a condo director, running a building and planning department. So I am probably a little more blunt than you would normally get from a housing consultant that's going to tell you, oh yeah, that's a great idea. I'm going to say, oh, I tried that. Here are my, I'm bald because of it or I'm turning white. And so you're probably going to get a little bit more of the local government perspective from me, having the fact that I, that's what I've been doing for the last 15 years. Next slide. All right. So you haven't, you're going to hear a bunch of these terms from me. If one of these terms comes up tonight that you need me to explain a little bit further, please let me know. There's, you know, like the missing middle is now a new term that the housing areas, if you go to a housing conference are going to kick around. And that's really, how do we deal with the housing that's not funded through any grant, which is your workforce housing, which is your 80 to, you know, even up to 200% AMI folks who can't, some, some communities can't buy into, into that, into that existing housing stock. You know, getting the housing continuum. Lytech is a fancy term that everyone loves to throw out. This is your space to create. Project was a Lytech project, a low income housing tax credit. That is probably the biggest housing program that's out there. And I will say that the only issue I have with that is it's 60% AMI or less. And I have a feeling when we start talking about the issues, you guys are going to tell me that workforce is really a major issue of trying to get your people who have full-time jobs or fully employed that are in that 80 to 160% AMI household income where the, where the funding doesn't exist. So that's the missing middle and we can get into any of these other ones if, if you'd like. And I'll, I'll be talking through some of these. Uh, next slide. All right. So is housing a problem? I'm probably here because it is. Otherwise you wouldn't have asked me to come. And to me, it's always, everywhere I go, it's a little different. We serve 13 counties from Lake all the way out to Baca. You know, the southeastern plains, I'm dealing with different issues that I'm probably going to be dealing with in Trinidad. But one, I can tell you supply and demand right now, right? You know, if you watch the national trends, there's a huge demand and a shortage of supply. Actually, if you read the latest housing news, this is, this is the first month where supply is actually starting to creep back up a little bit. But it has been so low. I mean, in Chaffee County, I know we have two weeks worth of housing supply that real estate agents could sell. And I'm sure you can imagine what that creates in the real estate economy. Workforce purchasing power. So this is when you start to see your average house price go above what your local worker could afford. I think we've seen that. You'll get into, you know, we've seen a 16% increase in housing costs across Colorado. We'll get in that. Rentals are very, very hard to build. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Rental projects have been the bane of my existence since I've been trying to build housing because every state funder, federal funder that you have sets AMI caps on that. And so if you're truly trying to find that workforce rental unit, that is a really hard unit to find and to build. Now, Lytech will get you those 60% AMI or less units, but the actual true missing middle, which is where you're seeing your most demand right now, that's going to be a hard task. You guys are, as a community, set up with having such a rich infrastructure of buildings that you, you, this is probably the first community I've set foot in where I said, wow, there is a chance here. There's a chance to, you know, because what having the brick and mortar here takes out so much additional cost of what new construction, which we'll get into in just a minute, which is materials have doubled. Home ownership needs are a big one and it really goes so much more than just buying a house, right? When you talk about first time home buyers, I remember the first time I stepped into a first time home buyer class, I was under contract, super excited. I was going to get a 5% down loan, signed all this paperwork, sat down, and then I sat through a day-long class and they told me how doomed I was to have a mortgage. And I was like, oh, wow. Well, I went back and I actually saved some more money than I had my 20% down and did it right. I personally felt like I did it right when I did it, but it took me two more years. But it was understanding my personal finances to set me up for success where I wasn't going to be underwater in my loan the first day. And that is the kind of stuff that when we talk about, it's not just building housing, it's building the infrastructure to make sure people are successful in that. Real home rehabilitation and repair, I think is a big one. You guys have an older housing stock and the types of programs that are out there. Helping folks refug is a simple process, but so many people can be intimidated by that process. But if, you know, this housing boom has built equity in their house. So if they're able to refi and put that, that money back into rehab and repair, that's a big thing. Hardest thing about that is finding a contractor that'll do the work for you, right? Financing, we've talked about the, the, this has been the tragedy to me with historic downtowns across our region, my, the region I represent, is the, there is no mixed-use equity. It is a equity desert if you're looking for mixed-use housing financing. I'm actually working and doing a panel with Dula at the housing conference in October specifically about that and how can we start to really turn around the downtown areas? You know, the canary in the coal mine to me is always your school district. Does the school district have any trouble finding teachers? You know, is your hospital district having trouble finding nurses? If that's the case, you got to have some problem. And the final question tonight is, is there, is the political support in this room to do it? And so that's what we'll find out tonight. Next slide. So I like this, this is, this is the theory, and I'll keep it very brief. Maslow's hierarchy of needs and the housing continuum on the right here. Maslow put it really well. If you don't have safe, secure housing, you're probably not going to be a very big member of your community. You're going to, you're going to, you're going to struggle through your basic needs every day to make sure they're met. So food, shelter, water. But as you know, as people invest in communities, as they get into homeownership, and as they move down the housing continuum and up the Maslow hierarchy of needs, this is when you start to get those people that become active citizens in your community. At the end of the day, that's what we're really looking for, right? And then, you know, I want to point out on the continuum, you know, when you look at this, you got to remember that housing stretches from homelessness to permanent housing, right? And there is a different housing program, different housing incentive. And I'll, I'll give you examples of even how we talk about homelessness, those experience homelessness, to permanent long-term rentals as policy items for you guys to discuss today. Next slide. I'm going really fast. Any questions so far?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the prior slide.
Yep.
You said something about rehab and repair. Is that, are you specifying that the, the owner of the house rehab or repair or that there's houses in the housing stock that need, could be purchased and rehab it?
I think both of those would apply. Yeah. There are, there's loan programs that help homeowners and then as we get into vacant property strategies, we can talk about how worse city intervention.
I think just from my observation, I think there's a lot of vacant abandoned homes in Trinidad that we might be able to look at.
And I'll get to that here in a minute. There was a really great link in there. It's the mayor's guide to abandoned properties. So if you want to take a look at that in the meeting and really look through that, that one really helps explain how you, and this is when, we'll, we'll get there. Just give me one minute. So housing, is the housing market being strong a good thing? I say absolutely. I remember my first day at the city of Salida, I had a council member who had been on town council for probably longer than I was alive, come in and shut my door and he told me, Michael, if anything ever happens to the construction industry, I'm going to hang you by the flagpole. And then he got up, walked out the door. And I was like, well, message received. But, and that's the truth is that 35% of Chaffee County's economy is construction and finance. And so he was very right. It's, it's really important that the bread, that those construction workers are able to put bread on their table every night and that, that you have a system and a process that embraces construction. Long-term housing, we just discussed, is an equity investment. Homeownership builds community pride and stable housing leads to stable employees. So having a strong housing market is very good. But we have seen a very strong market in that we've seen 16% increases in home prices over the last two years. Astronomical. COVID has rechanged where people work and the communities live in. Trinidad has obviously become much more attractive. Material costs, material costs, material costs has killed new construction. I'm dealing with that on a major build that I'm working on in the southeastern plains. And it's really, when you start talking about those material costs, you have to also consider labor costs as well and the lack of labor. Economies of scale are really starting to matter on the bottom lines. So these two or three housing, you know, a builder that just builds two or three houses a year is really getting cut off at the knees. Lack of supplies, especially with rentals, and then low interest rates, right? You can, you can afford a lot more than you used to be able to afford five or six years ago with the interest rates at 3% right now. So, next slide. So in Los Angeles County, this is going back to what, what are the big, bigger issues out there in the economy? Access to capital, appraisals. I'm not sure we're seeing that as a big of an issue now that we're seeing the, the kind of uptick in pricing and equity. But it's really important to, at some point in this process, for us to check in with the local banks, right? Because everything we're doing has to be financed. The city isn't going to be able to finance everyone's housing. So we have to be really realistic of what we're building, the price point we're trying to build to, and that we have, we have a, we have a local bank that's willing to loan to whoever's getting in there. Economies of scale are the projects big enough to actually drive down pricing. That has been a big one because of construction costs. I can tell you that when I did my first numbers on building a house, I was about 20% over what I could finance on the eastern plains. So we've had to really get aggressive with numbers and, and the, the amount that we're doing, as well as getting a project large enough for, project I'm referring to, that actually would keep workers, this, this work for eight months. So it's, it's really easy to go and try to hire an electrician and say, I'm going to have you show up for the next eight months. I'm going to just tell you exactly where you're going to be and here's your project. They love that. Infrastructure is a huge one. This is, I'll get into this. This is broccoli cost. I'll tell you why that is here in a little bit. You know, higher construction costs than what you can actually borrow. That's an upside down market. That's a big flashing red light. We'll know a lot more about that once the needs assessment is out and know exactly where we stand. And then one other really interesting one is that you guys do have a lot of planted lots that are kind of in limbo, for lack of a better way to say. And talking about what needs to happen with those subdivisions that have been planted already and how do we get those lots in that housing stock, especially the land going again. Next slide. So this is what's really, this was the, when I did the, when I pulled the initial numbers, and this is why I'm really excited to see the needs assessment and yeah, thanks Guy for handing that out. So there's a couple of things. This table here is the CHAFA, the top, this top rate, this, when you look at the table, this top box here is your CHAFA housing AMI. Every year it's updated for Los Angeles County. And so when you, when we talk about AMIs and who qualifies, that's the, that's the magic number that comes out of HUD, that CHAFA picks up and CHAFA basically, if you're, if you're applying for, if you're applying for any kind of grant, there's going to be an AMI threshold attached to what you're allowed to build with that money. And so that's really important because what I will tell you is when you start looking at the AMIs, there's no such thing as free money. And you have to understand that, you know, my first, my first big project was a Lytech project and here's my story on Lytech. I showed up the day we got it leased up. I had about three or four parks employees march over and a public works employee march over to sign up for their lease. They came, all came back and said, I made too much money. I don't qualify for the housing. My finance director hung me by my feet from the ceiling and that was the last light that project ever did. What I didn't understand when I first did that, well, one, I inherited it, but two, more importantly, what I didn't understand was that the Lytech was going to have such strict limits on income and, and what they could actually afford. Now, is that a needed, was that a needed project in the community? Were the people that needed that housing, they were 60% AMI or less? Absolutely. So at the end of the day, it was a really good thing, but my lesson learned was, all right, we need to be strategic about who we serve and that every single project is going to hit, you know, the whole threshold of people.
Mike, before we go along, can you explain what you mean by true?
Sorry, which one is?
It's the fourth one over.
Yeah. Oh, so true is, these are the, this applies to the whole table. So that, what that means is, what, what true means is when I, when you, say you were going to be in a housing lottery, what is your true income, right? So we're looking at everything you're reporting.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was just that one category.
No, no, it's, it applies to the whole table. The other thing that's interesting that, because we also, as you're, we're actually an economic development district, we run your wage, wages. If you look, there's actually a big disparity between 100% your average wage and what, what CHAFA's showing at 51. I found that really interesting. What's also really interesting to me is Los Angeles County is lumped in with about eight other counties and they put the same, your, your numbers match exactly the same thing as in Springfield or Walsh. So there's, there's, that's why I tell you that this AMI table, it, to me, it, this is what your government funders rely on. But I think the people in this room are actually, you know more about your community, about what people can actually truly afford. So when we're not talking about, when we're talking about incentives that wouldn't involve grants from other sources, that's when you guys have the ability to say, okay, we know what the numbers are, but what's the true, what's our true 100%?
I hear the, the, the numbers, are they run by the AMI? Is that the state or federal standards?
Uh, it is HUD to the state and the state had issues in for counties. It's a, it's, yeah, it's not, there's not, sorry not to have a clear answer.
When was the last time that was?
They do it every year. Yeah. And these are, this is 2021 numbers.
Explain, I'm sorry, I, everybody understands this. Household size, what are the percentages on top?
That's your income. So 100% AMI is your average worker. So that's your, that's your family. And so a household of two, 58,000 is two wage earners. Then you start adding in kids. And then down here, what's cool about this, so this, this is the, this is your, sorry, this is your CHAFA table up above. What we, what I, I have a, I've been doing this for a while in that we, I created with a, with another housing director, we created what does that actually mean for buying power? So this actually gets into what does somebody making X be able to afford and then also with rental rates? So that's important to understand, especially when you're, if, say we're trying to build houses and we want to target workforce between 80 and 140, you would know, okay, a one-bedroom, what are those price points that those folks can absorb?
Now, there's $40,000 income. Is that individual or is that family?
That is an individual wage earner. That's from our jobs report that we run for you for Los Angeles County as part of what we do as economic development. That's wage. There's a difference between wage and income, right? And what probably pushes up the income of retirement plans, social security, there's additional things that come in that aren't your wager, wage and earners. So this is important to workforce to pay attention to.
Now, I don't know if you have this information or not. Because if that's an individual wagering for $40,000, because you have two people working in the family, is there any statistics out there, any like Los Angeles County of what the, basically, I guess, how many families in the, in the county or in the city are single, $40,000 earners or multiple or dual?
The American, the American Community Survey does have data on that. In rural areas, it's not highly accurate because they just do a sampling of the population. But I can send you that from the American Community Survey. And it does give this sort of economic breakdown of household size, income, you know, and even by age, earnings by age.
Because it would be, I think it'd be interesting for me to be able to see that information and then you could tell what, what size of a home or what, what all these people can afford.
And so from, from a source like the American Community Survey or the Census Bureau, like those numbers are really useful in bigger cities. And in more rural areas, their, their margins of error are pretty large. And in more rural areas, their, their margins of error are pretty large.
Your, your needs assessment, though, should be a little bit more in depth, and they will have a little bit more specific numbers. That's actually, again, that's what's really nice about your process right now, is that you will have that data, that raw data that they looked at. Because the other thing that needs assessment, you're looking at is your major employers and what they're paying.
When did you say we'd have that needs assessment done?
Um, about the same time that this is going to finish. So that's, that's getting underway shortly.
Okay. Any other questions? This, you'll, sorry, this is the one-on-one class, so if you go to a conference anytime in the near future and you're talking about housing, you're going to hear AMI. And this program can go up to eighty percent, this program, what, you know, DULLA's new thing is they'll go up to a hundred and forty on homeownership. Anyhow, just know, as elected, know what you're getting into, and you have a day ahead of now. Uh, next slide. So, this is, this, the housing affordability in this cost burden household is really important as you talk about what is the stress on a, on an individual family? Are they one paycheck away from being foreclosed on? I'm sure you've heard all those types of things. A cost burden household is any, any household spending more than thirty percent of their monthly income on housing, and that includes utilities. And-
And that's, and that's a gross income, not net income, so it's before deductions.
You know, what's scary about that number is just recently I heard where a large majority of people are in that fifth percent range right now, so it's just totally upside down where we're talking about it. That's scary.
And it's even more scary because the folks that normally are in that, as Sky pointed out to me, it's what they spend, they actually, on top of that, want spending about an additional twenty-five percent of their income on community and transportation costs. And it's just, it's just that this is a proportionate amount because gasoline cost is fixed, whether you make a hundred and fifty thousand or you make forty thousand a year, paying the same amount, right? Um, you know, what I'm really interested in is what percentage of the city residents are renters from the needs assessment across the, across the state, it's thirty-five percent. But it'll be interesting to see what the true number is for Trinidad. And again, that number in particular is important, because like I told you at the beginning of this, rentals are next to impossible to build. And if you, if, if you guys are over the state average and we're looking at rental progress, we're going to have to get really slick on how we address that, so.
And, and you're like, when you think about just the experience of affordable housing, with a median income of about forty thousand, that means that your monthly, what you can afford, what's affordable, is around twelve hundred dollars a month, which is about fifty percent of your take home pay. So, so it's, it's really, I mean, it's really quite a burden. So where we set the bar for affordability is, is about as high as you could possibly set it.
Alright, next slide. And then we're going to get in, after this slide, we'll start getting into the fun stuff. So, this is, this is why, this is the why slide. Why do, why does government now, why are we talking about housing? Why are we doing something that's traditionally been covered by the private market? And what I will say is, uh, number one, you know, you're, you're dealing with now workforce that can't afford, their affordability range is out of sight. You, you are, you are Trinidad. You are located in a beautiful spot, and you have some, you know, unless the mountains go away, you're, you're going to continue to see external forces and folks wanting to move here. You're a desirable place to be. You're a walkable community. All great things, but that increases the housing costs. Unfortunately, private industry is at a point where they're not able to hit the price points that actually are allowing for workforce industry. And a lot of that has to do with probably economies of scale. If you do larger projects, they have the ability to reduce their profits. Probably, I will tell you, the only thing I always tell councils is profit's not a dirty word when it comes to housing. If, if you have a builder who isn't interested in the profit, you probably need to think about whether or not you want to actually have them as, as your contractor. Uh, and I say that because, at the end of the day, they have, they have a family to feed, and they have workers that rely on them as well as part of that. Uh, land availability is a huge one. I, in a million years, if you would have told me when I walked down the southeastern plains and I started this pro, the project I'm working on right now, that I was going to have trouble finding land in the middle of farm fields, I would, ah, it's so easy. I'm having an impossible time to find buildable lots to build new housing in Lamar, in La Hanta. And we're going in looking at blighted properties and how to reuse that. But that one has just been like crazy to me. I, I can understand in like Shapewell County where I live, where, you know, seventy-five percent of the land is public. You guys have the same kind of issue in Los Angeles, especially up by the mountains. So, the last thing I will tell you is, is the reason that you guys are talking about this today is the same reason you do wastewater, right? Nobody wants to do it. So it falls to the local government, and you guys are taking care of a task, just like it is running a wastewater's treatment plant. And that's my best example I can provide you of, you know, why would you do this is, at the end of the day, you're dealing with a thing that no one else wants to deal with. Alright, now let's-
That third, that third bullet point is the one that scares me the most.
Yes. It is. It's, it's, it's labor and materials combined. And I will tell you that it's really hard to convince a contractor to come out and build at a hundred and fifty a square foot when they get through fifty. And it's all finishes and just the, just, and that's, that's the issue with trying to build a small project, right? When you do larger projects, the numbers are bigger, so the profit margins are wider, so that they can do the smaller, you know, smaller bills, or bigger bills, sorry. Uh, next slide. Alright, so that was the crash course. So I'm sure your heads are spinning, and I apologize, but we're all, all, all known what we're talking about now. So I wanted to go through some ideas. We'll talk about these in depth, about what you're most interested in exploring in the last twenty, thirty minutes of today. Uh, that's the sushi menu in front of you, but I want to give some context to what each of these mean, uh, and so that you can start to wrap your head around them. We're happy, there's no way I, there's no way you're going to absorb all of this tonight, so I'm more than happy to come back and really talk and give some more examples of, of each of these that you want to explore. Like I said, I don't expect we're going to do all of them, so. This first one, I actually learned about Built for Zero program. I actually learned about this in Fremont County. I was actually sitting in the Fremont County Commissioners' meeting. I was waiting for my turn to talk about the SEDs, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that my company does. And there was a presentation on, well, it was an update from Commissioner Bell on the Built for Zero program, and so I started looking into it. It's actually a really, really cool program, and it's dresses, actually starts with addressing veteran homelessness, which is really cool. Uh, in that it is a system where they actually look at all of your social service nets. And as you probably know, each of those social services nets deals with a different portion of the homelessness problem, right? So maybe one's dealing with, with transitional housing, one's dealing with the food shelter. What this program does is it actually tries to bring all those entities together, and it really starts with tackling the first thing, which is, how do we, how do we make sure our vets aren't homeless? And then by dealing with the vets, they're able to expand those systems to start capturing more and more. But the really, the system comes down to is knowing who your homelessness, who those experiencing homelessness in your community are. Uh, it's a pretty cool program. I'll be honest with you. This is something that I haven't dealt with, but we do have a community in our district that actually has reached functional zero. Uh, if you, if you know Fremont and Custer Counties, there's a huge veteran population there. I think that's why it was a major priority for the Commissioners. But it's a, it's a very interesting program. The second one is land banking, and I'll cut that in half, and then there's a community land trust model. So, land banking, I can tell you right now that having property that's under city control, under county control, that you can build housing on in the next twenty years is going to be a good idea from day one. So, you can't build housing if you don't have land that's ready to build on. So, putting those properties away, earmarking them, mapping them, going through that exercise, and figuring, find out what your horizontal costs are in those properties. And be honest with you, the city's best position, we'll get into this in a little bit, your best position is to deal with horizontal infrastructure and the broccoli, because that's what you do as a municipality. Going vertical is not a specialty of the city. But, again, having property, yes.
Hey, I can tell me, what is going broccoli? What are you talking about?
I'll, broccoli, I, so, alright, I'll jump ahead and, so my, when I started in Crested Butte, I was building a, um, we were building restrooms at the ice arena, and we had to do a sewer line, so I was in a department head meeting, and I was talking about the beautiful design and how the stuff, and he's like, well, how are you going to pay for your broccoli, Michael? And I'm like, what do you, what do you mean? He's like, how are you going to pay for the sewer line, the asphalt, you know, all the work that my crews is supposed to do, because no one wants to eat the broccoli. Everyone wants dessert, which is a new building, and so that's when the term broccoli was, was taught, was taught to me. It was like, eat your broccoli before you do any project, right? And it's all the stuff that you can't see, like a donor, so I, in Crested Butte, you can get donors for a lot of things, like there's a donor wall, and they, they put the sign out front. No one wants to say, oh, I paid for the sewer line, you know? So, but no, that, that sewer line is two hundred thousand dollars. We need a donor for the sewer line. Um, that's the broccoli I'm talking about.
Need flush the toilet. Need flush the toilet.
Yep, me too. Um, the community land trust model is a really interesting one. Uh, the Shapewell Housing Trust in my neck of the woods. They actually, they, what they do is, when you have high land costs in communities, they actually control through a lease the ground. And there's a lending model in which they basically only pass on the vertical costs, and they hold the ground, and a ground lease for ninety-nine years on the property. It's an interesting way to go about funding. I'm not sure it's applicable, but there's a, there's a link in there for you to go and learn more about that. So, property maintenance codes. Uh, this deals with blight, your abandoned properties. One of the really interesting things about this is if you go to the mayor's guide, that's included in your link, and you read through that, the first thing you're going to realize is that the big thing about there is collaboration and partnerships. And it's really under, that, that, that is written for major cities, so you'll read about Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and the Rust Belt where I'm, where I grew up. The fact of the matter, though, is when you really read between the lines, what it's telling you in that guide is, how do you form partnerships with the, with the entities, i.e. the county, that, that deal with tax liens, that deal with how you actually acquire that property? The other thing that's really important about that is what you were just discussing, as talking about rehabilitation and repair, is don't let the properties become abandoned. So, how do we create incentives to make sure that doesn't happen? Uh, and then finally, even when you actually start talking about the enforcement of property maintenance codes and how you go about that. I could share a long story about my first day of doing property maintenance in the city of Salida's downtown, and how I did a one eighty, and did a whole different program after the first day of walking around and trying to do citations. So, happy to talk about that, but again, you know, that's a big one, especially when you have an older housing stock. Um, mobile home park rules and replacement. I provided you a link in your packet to DULLA's mobile home park and replacement. This one, to me, is the one that doesn't get any lip service at all from the state funders. And it doesn't matter if you're in Aspen, Salida, or Trinidad, mobile homes exist everywhere, and the rules and regulations have gotten so stringent about what you can do with the older ones, that it's basically left people, you know? And anyhow, I could talk in lecture for an hour on that, but this is something that, as a state, we need to start to come to grips with, on how do we actually start dealing with those and getting folks able to get out of them. And the hardest part about it is actually getting the old trailer off the property. And then we start talking about parks. Is there an incentive? Do you have a park owner? Are there incentives that you can partner? A lot of that, a lot of those parks were established way back when. I'm sure your public works director would tell you about some of the, some of the needs of infrastructure in there. It's not new to any mobile home park. Public-private developer builds. So this is, this is really, when you talk about incentives, and you talk about, you know, how do you work with your, with your private developers? We're going to get into that in a bunch of detail. That's probably where a vast majority of, when you talk about trying to supply the missing middle, that is, how do you work with your local development community, right? What is the housing gap? What is that funding need between what they can produce at, say, two fifty and what you need at two twenty as a housing price point? How do you work with them to deal with broccoli and everything else to try to get that, that home cost, engineering and everything? We'll talk about that on our strategies. Opportunity zone financing. You guys are in an opportunity zone. How many type, how many, quick show of hands, how many guys have, have heard of opportunity zones? And how many of you have no idea what they are? Please me. Uh, the only reason I actually know anymore is because we actually have an investor who wants to spend that. Opportunity zones are a way, over a ten-year period, for people who are experiencing high capital gain taxes, to put money into an investment that basically allows them to park that, those funds for a ten-year period in property, typically rental property, that allows them to basically erase that capital gains tax over ten years. And you have community investment funds out there, uh, and funders who basically go out to those folks who have capital gains, create an account, and actually go out and finance these projects. We're actually seeing the first interest in our region under that, with, with some of the projects we're working on. Nonprofit builds. I loved hearing, uh, when I did, when I was on Zoom about what Trinidad State is doing. I did basically the exact same program with our local high school in Crested Butte. We were able to get them funded and sustainable, and then stepped away. And they, once they were up and going, they were able to do, that was very small scale, not like, like you guys have doing on here, but we were able to make them sustainable so that the program lasts. We were very clear that we weren't giving operation funding. We were giving capital, seed capital, to go out and acquire properties. But we were very intentional about setting that up for success in the future. Uh, and then last, subsidized rental housing, the Litech, um, that's your big, and those use section eight vouchers to guarantee renters. And then the last one I will tell you about is business ownership. So, one, one thing that I've learned is that you can actually, that, the, the need for workers has gotten so big in your community that you will have some businesses and school districts and such that will actually purchase a for sale project, units out of a for sale model, and then hold them for rentals for their employees. And so, what, why that matters to, what we're talking about is, it's a lot easier to pass on and be made whole, vertical construction costs, right? So you're not financing, so you don't, you have a ten million dollar build, and you sell ten point five million dollars in housing. You've got your ten million dollars back, builder walks away, keys in community member's hands, new houses, right? Problem with business, uh, rentals is, you build the project, and then rental rates funded over time, right? And the problem that, of that is that you guys, you guys are restricted by taper, so you can't finance the housing bill. So you either have to turn them over at the end of the project, or go to one of these programs. Problem with the program is, it restricts your AMI and who you can serve. So, being able to partner directly with local businesses and sell them units that then they keep and rent back to employees has actually become a really attractive option. Next slide.
So before we go on, Charlotte, come on, one line that, you talk, go back one.
Can you go back one, please? Thank you.
You're talking, when we start talking about the community land bank trust and available properties, one of the big things that is, that there is out there today is infill building first, before you go out to annexation. And what you need to identify, first of all, all available lots, whether they're privately owned or not, and where they, where they can, they'll be able to, they'll sell them to build on, so they'll build on it themselves. And at what point, a percentage of those available lots that are used up, do you, should we consider going out and annexing new property to build on?
Yep. Well, you know, uh, there's a number of different approaches to that. One of them, uh, obviously is, is fixing our accessory dwelling unit code and how that's written, which, um, which could potentially make a lot of lots buildable with another, an additional house or two, um, depending on how it's written. And, and that, and that's a distributed model. It's not that one developer could come in and build a whole bunch of ADUs, but it does make everybody in Trinidad a potential developer, or maybe not everybody, but it, it, it distributes that potentiality development. Um, another way of, of approaching that is how we measure density. Right now, it's not really defined, but we kind of, I think, tend to measure it by, if it's not a PUD, we measure it by the density within a given lot, rather than within a given area. But, but raising density caps, uh, even, even as little overlay zones, even in, in small areas, uh, means that you could take an old house that's in terrible condition, and you could replace it with a duplex or a fourplex. You know, and then instead of replacing one house with one house, you're replacing one house with four or five, theoretically, right? So, so, I mean, another place where you can get new land, um, within the city for infill is, and, and we may talk about this a little bit later, is looking at ways that we require land for the building of a- for the building of a single house, such as off-street parking. Um, you know, that, that takes up a certain amount of space. Um, if you're in a denser area and you're wanting to build an apartment complex, the amount of land you have to dedicate to parking, uh, could really restrict how many apartments you can build because you have to make an ocean of parking, which also creates an urban environment that's dominated by parking and not by buildings. Um, so, so, you know, a parking dominated environment looks fairly different from our historic district. Um, and, um, so, so parking would be one, one area. Um, another thing is minimum lot sizes. You know, there, the, um, there's a lot of history behind why those came about and how they were, uh, formed and to a purpose. Uh, but if you said, no, in some ways, density is important. It creates a feeling, it creates sort of a, you know, different types of urbanism in the center as you go out, maybe lower density is more appropriate, but how that's measured could be different. Right now we measure it by having minimum lot sizes, or that's how we regulate it, which means that you can't necessarily have a small lot next to a large lot. Um, and that means, um, you, you use density to kind of create class segregated neighborhoods, you know, where everybody has to afford a large lot. So you can't really have small homes and large homes, uh, next to each other. So it kind of, kind of, you know, pushes away from mixed income communities.
Before we go forward, let's see if we have any questions. And what we've covered, what you've covered so far, Mr. Goyd, anything?
No, maybe just out of curiosity, maybe this is going a little bit too forward. Uh, on a, on a percentage basis, sir, would you, uh, what would you say the success rate has been in, for your five-year projection plan with all of the township cities you prepare?
Sure. Uh, well, there's a, I've worked for, basically it was Crestabute. And what I will tell you is that our five-year plan was a living plan and we adapted that plan. We visit, I, it was, we, but we, we sat down, budget season during the October. So we sat down with the council in September and revisited our five-year plan every year. And we had targeted units. Um, we hit it. We hit, uh, 30% of the in-town housing stock to have a deed restriction on it. And the only matrix that we didn't hit was getting 15 business or employee rentals for our community. But we were well on our way to, to getting there in the five years. But I was able to build 101 units in a really difficult time to build them. So in five, in six years.
The only conceptual question I have at this point is, um, how are we going to decide what our housing goals are without having our housing needs assessment?
Well, that's, as to that tonight, what I'm going to ask you is to, what does your gut tell you? That, that's really what, and I, and you, and you, you know your community, right? You've talked to folks in your community. What are the stress points? And, and I think you can tell me that. And that's, the needs assessment is probably going to confirm what your gut is telling you. But I can tell you that you, you, you know your constituency. The folks in this room know them and you know your development community. And so you can, you will be able to point me. And then again, goals are the North Arrow, right? They're keeping you headed in the right direction.
Okay.
Yep.
I have no questions, Colonel.
Okay.
I have a lot of questions, but I don't know what they are.
There you go. We'll get to all.
I'm trying to absorb all this. I have a gut, when you talk about a gut feeling, I have a gut feeling what a problem is. I just don't know how to change our problem into a solution. But I'm thinking you're the guy that knows how to do that along with Sky.
We'll get there. Like I said, it's, it takes three years from today before you really start seeing results. And I hate to say it like that because it's, their, housing is not instant. There's a lot to it. If it was easy, then I probably wouldn't be here, right? Uh, so that's just the reality.
Frank, well, uh, well, I've got some questions and stuff, but what, the most important thing is that, you know, all this information you gave us, we don't build houses for the city of, we're, we're not in this house busy. So all this information, to me, doesn't do us a lot of good to, to do this. What we need to do is get people that are developers and people to do that. And as far as incentives go, you know, uh, there's a lot of houses out there for sale. If people want houses, they're out there. And to me, that, you know, the, the housing crisis isn't that bad out there because you can drive up any of the streets and find houses for sale. The problem is money and people don't want to pay for it. You know, a great example, and I'm not saying anything, there's a house where I live in Allen Dale, a smaller house. And, uh, they, the lady died and they sold it, you know, for probably twice what it was worth. And somebody bought it, but that's, that's a real big problem because people keep elevating all that. And as far as expanding our city limits for our housing, that would be difficult because people don't want to sell their land. And so that makes it kind of tough. So what I'm saying is, uh, all this information needs to get out to people that want it. We've had three or four people, uh, building houses here. They, they had no problem. They went and found land, uh, Ringo's and a couple of people up in Allen Dale. There is land available if people want to look at it. And as far as rentals, that's kind of a, like you say, that's a tough situation because we don't, we're not in a rental business and it's, it's hard. So what I'm asking is how do we get this information to people that really need it to get this going? And, and as far as what you're asking the city, us to do for incentives?
Sure. And we'll, we'll get there tonight because we're going to start talking about, two slides from now, we'll talk about what are strategies.
Okay.
Frank, I, I saw this today and I got this information today from someone that came from Realtor. Right now there's 37 homes in Trinidad for sale.
And that's just Realtors. There's a lot of people that are selling homes that are, you know, heck, I know three or four people that just got tired of living here in Trinidad and sold their houses and left. I mean, I don't know why. I mean, they didn't, they just said they didn't want to live here anymore. So, uh, of course, and it, and it was fortunate that two of them got some people to, they sold the houses right away and they, they moved in, so they're not empty. But that does make a big difference.
Well, and what I would, what I would just say, answer your question directly, because I, I, it's a very pointed and well-directed comment. And so I, I like it because, because back to why are you guys even considering doing this? And it's a good reason to do ways for it, right? But to your point, what you need to find out from the development community is what is the stresses that are preventing them from delivering the stuff you need? And what you guys are able to do is to then go into the strategies and say, how do we help get from here to there? And oh, by the way, it's not a handout and what do we expect? And we'll get to that for tonight, but I, I, I understand completely. You, you don't, this isn't a room full of contractors, right? You, we're not building housing tonight in this room. What you guys are trying to do is build capacity.
Colonel, you have another question?
I, I have a question on short-term rentals. Would this study give any indication as to what effect short-term rentals have in our housing market?
Um, let's go to the next slide. We'll get there.
Okay.
We'll get there, we have one more to get going soon. I might have questions. Mr. Goyd.
So what I'm curious is two things. How many communities have you worked with, been in a, a situation we are where the mine opening up ahead of schedule, set 79 employees already, two different hotels, room renting, paying as much as a hundred dollars, a hundred and ten dollars a night, $3,300 a month, looking for housing? They're not looking for a three-year, uh, solution before we see results. How many communities have you worked with that's been in this position? And how do we address the housing market for a company that's looking within three years to possibly have over 200 employees?
So the first question of who have I dealt with and it's every county. This is not unique to Trinidad. Lake County, I was, uh, working with them this morning on trying to get them up and running. Uh, I'm up in talking to Werferno County. I am building 70 units out in the southeastern plains, breaking ground next year. So it is not unique to Trinidad. You guys are not, and I can tell you that Shaky County passed a housing crisis referendum. Same thing with Crestabute. Uh, they, Crestabute has done a moratorium on single fam, family home building. They've done a moratorium on short-term rental vacation licenses. I actually passed a short-term rental. I could talk to them right in the face about short-term rentals because I established not only all the regulations in Crestabute and took on Airbnb and BNB or BNB, well, as a community, we took them on and you could, I could share a funny story about that. Um, a newspaper story about that. But beyond that, um, we actually got a short-term rental excise tax passed by the ballot. And I've got that passed 87% and funded our affordable housing efforts. So I do have that experience. Um, and to tell you that the one thing I will say again is we should be looking, to answer your question about how do we do this sooner rather than later? The question and answer to that is you look for your low-hanging fruit and you figure out where your best opportunities are. And that's why when I came in here and I said today, don't let this slip, is it takes three years to do a housing project and not every housing project is going to solve every one of these problems. So if we wanted to target rentals, and I think that's probably where this community is best targeted because you have the existing building stock in your downtown and it has services and infrastructure. So you're not looking at extending services. How do you partner with developers? How do you truly understand what is keeping them from moving forward with that 30-unit project? That's what we should be investigating. And what's the incentive that you're going to give? And then we'll get to the what you get in return, so it's not a handout. And I'll get to that here in just a second. So that answer.
Go ahead. There's another question here?
Did I answer? Start to address it.
It, it kind of does. I mean, I didn't know there were that many communities that had a company this size with this amount of employees looking for housing this immediate. I didn't know that was a problem across the whole state.
It's, uh, it's, there, when I started, my, my, I've been here exactly a year. When I first stepped foot in the 13 counties, I was supposed to do job creation and economic development. That was what I, that's always my new career, I want to be an economic development planner. I walked into the first community and they said, we don't want a new business because if you bring in a new business, I know it has. And that's especially the six counties east of where you guys are at. That was the first thing I heard every time I walked into a council or commissioner chamber room is, what are you going to do with the house? That's why I'm here.
Yeah, one thing we want to do is to, except, you know, Mr. Goyd, I was talking about the mine, for instance, and they tried to bring in additional employees. One thing that we, I'm concerned about is suppressing that, the mine, I guess, the entire company, to where they start losing companies, employees. Because they have to, because there's kind of specialized, you know, people. And there, they brought them in from other, other states. And I hear some of them are getting very frustrated because there are, some of our families and some are individuals. But they're getting, a lot of them are getting very frustrated where they want to leave. So that is one major obstacle that we have in front of us. I, I guess, like I was saying, there's 37 homes out there, but the problem with the homes, you know, the average home right now selling is what, 350,000 here in Trinidad? And upwards of that. So can these people afford that? That's the other problem. Because their, their average salary up there is right around, what, 50 or 55,000, Mike, I think? Somewhere in that range. So they're looking for, I think temporarily, uh, some rentals. So there's the real catch that we have.
Yeah, no, I, I recognize it. I, I see it. So you know, like I said, let's get through this.
I want, I did want to ask one question if I may. You said, I may have misheard you, I'm sorry. You said you are breaking ground on units, where?
Uh, so I'll, I'll tell you about, so to answer your question, what, what am I working on today? So, um, out in the southeastern plains across nine municipalities and all six counties, they use their American Rescue funds, uh, to subsidize a package to attract a developer to build 60 to 70 units, um, for sale, uh, out there. And so what they did was they combined their resources and we'll go to strategies. They took care of the broccoli costs, design engineering, architecture horizontal, got developer ready, bought land, took land costs out of it to get to a price point that the new buyer walking in has about a 20% discount. And then, oh, and by the way, economies of scale, the project are big enough that we're able to buy, you know, we're able to buy 60 refrigerators and 60 washer and dryers, you know, for each unit. Uh, so we're buying at a, at a cost that's getting it to where we're actually hitting a price point that's affordable to the workforce.
Who's specifically doing the project and who owns it and sells it, holds or sells it?
So the model for that project is, it is, um, the, the 15 local governments are passing the, the funds to SCED and CSED, which is the Southern Econ Enterprise, sorry, I'm going to screw up their name. Southern Enterprise Car, Southeastern Colorado Enterprise District. So S E C E D, not SCED. But if you go to their website, you can see the feasibility study that we produced and everything. But basically the model's simple. SCED and CSED are going to hold the, hold the land, transfer it to a developer once they secure, secure their construction financing. The developer is going to build and fill up the units to buyers.
So are they subsidizing it or they'll recover the full cost?
Who's subsidizing it? The local government's put the initial subsidy in. And the developer is going to get their vertical construction costs out of the, out of the sale.
Here's, here's, I think, where the rubber meets the road right now and will be right for the next year, is that if you don't have anybody that, like, if we could plan, you know, a five people, you know, a five apartment complex or a 50 apartment complex. But if we don't have anybody that's willing to come down here and pound nails and boards, we could throw all the money at it, we could throw all the ideas out there, but if we can't get anybody to actually do the work, that is the real problem.
And the other big problem is where are those construction workers going to live while they're counting? I, I mean, we're, yep. Yeah, nope. And that's, that's why again, I think when, when we start, the, the luxury I had before Sky started was Wally walked me around and showed me some of these big projects that you guys have in these bigger buildings. There is that opportunity. It's how do we incentivize them? And, you know, why don't you skip, skip over the zone, um, skip over this slide real quick? Sorry. Uh, it's one more.
And you know, okay.
Okay. So let's, let's, I'm going to skip a, I'm going to skip back and forth. We'll talk about strategies. When you guys are talking about incentives, right? You don't build housing.
Right.
Perfect, right? What you can do and how do you, how does the city protect your investment in housing? That's, that's where, this is, this is where the rubber meets the road. So if you're going to put real money in the housing, how do you protect and make sure it's at the end of the day, near to not getting anybody who walks in here a check, right? This, these are, these are your handful of options of how you do it. And this is what protects your property, your investment in perpetuity. So it is not a handout, right? We, we're not going to, you know, just anyone who walks in to ask for, ask for money isn't going to get, they have to produce results. Right now, a housing unit is going to cost you $200,000 if you bone one by one, right? But how do you take $200,000, work with a private investor, a private developer, and get 10 units for your $200,000? That's the kind of returns that you guys want to be talking about. And the way you do that is by getting deed restrictions or rental agreements. Rent control in Colorado as a zoning control is illegal. You say, you ever heard of New York rent controlled apartments? You cannot do that in Colorado. You can do a rental agreement with a developer. So for instance, say you have one of these larger apartment complexes downtown and you are going to give them a subsidy to get that project moving, right? What you can do as a council is enter into a new development agreement with a rental agreement that says, we're going to get X number of units at this price point for X number of years. And that's how, you, that's the quote pro, right? That's what you're getting in return is a guarantee that your workforce is now having access to those rentals.
I guess what really I've been looking for is what kind of incentive that we can give, you know, the developer to draw them, to, you know, to have them to do something, do some building.
Well, I'll tell you, the answer to that question is, Scott and I have quite a couple of months ahead of us of sitting down and having that conversation of what's keeping you from moving that project forward. And I'll tell you, the, for instance, what was keeping the project in the southeastern plains from moving forward was not a single builder in their right mind was going to deal with nine municipalities and six B O C Cs. That was, that was actually the number one thing, right? So, hey, you want to come out? I'll get, you know, get 60 units, take, they're like, Michael, you're insane. I'm not going to go in nine different city councils to build a house. Like, don't forget about it. I like to turn around and lock up the door and I brought it up, I said, whoa, 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 whoa. What if I deal with all the planning? What if I'm the idiot that runs around and, you know, you know, gets as good as through the brain damage? Okay, well.
See, we're, we're, you know, we're, we are not the lenders, you know? We're, we're, you know, we are not the lenders, you know, we are, we provide services. That's what our city does, and any service does, our city does. We provide the service. As far as lending goes, all this money that's out there, you know, I guess, Wally and Sky may be able to work with the developer or somebody else, both of them, to direct them to a lender or somebody like Chaff or whoever for, for that money, but that's as much as they could do.
Well, we could, we, you know, one thing we could do on the finance side is provide collateral support. So an under-capitalized developer could then use the city's backing to take out a little bit of a bigger loan to get a project going.
Backing in what way?
Where we, we provide some collateral support. We say, you know, the city's going to back this project and, and, not really our pocket money, but we take on some of that risk.
That would be something that we would have to decide whether we want to take on this. Now, let me ask you this.
And that's important that Chaff.
If we were to provide incentives such as, you know, maybe providing maybe the tap services, could they use that as collateral to help them?
Absolutely, that's another common strategy.
What you're going to, what the term you're going to, that's on the list, is affordability gap, right? That is a key term takeaway, because that is the term, that refers to what right now your development community is experiencing that's keeping that project from moving forward. So, real round numbers, it's two hundred thousand dollars a unit for something to do in a apartment complex, they're only going to receive one sixty back if they build a unit. They have a forty thousand dollar gap. And how do they get assistance from, how do they close that gap through this incentive program? Is it a direct subsidy for a rental agreement? Or is it, or are they having issues with horizontal infrastructure or engineering? You know, those are the types of things that you need to ask your development community. Because once you understand that, that's where you structure, structure that. The answer to your other question is, you may be competitive, right? You know, we made a competitive process for the southeastern plains. We made it attractive enough to bring in developers to compete against each other so that there was actually enough blood in the water for lack of river to get the sharks circling, to want to actually go after that project and build it. There was enough profit there, right? Profit's not a dirty word. They actually saw, okay, with that six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand dollar subsidy, I'm able to now make X, you know, ten thousand dollars a unit, you know, times sixty, right?
They're going to, I mean, just an example, how, you got a building away, West Apartments, they probably have, they probably have, probably twenty-five apartments in there and they're not being used, the building. How could you get the guy that owns that building to go in there and remodel and make those apartments available? Because, I mean, you're talking that we have these buildings available. That's, that's the question, is how, how are they going to get these people to get this incentive and the money to do those apartments? And that's, that's the biggest issue. We don't have money to give them or anything, or even grant money. I don't even know if you can get grant money for a own personal deal like that, but.
The only way you can get it is, is if you subsidize or you restrict the AMI to the point where you're not going to be hitting the workforce that you're trying to target. So the answer is, there isn't a program, I mean, it's tough love today, there isn't a program out there that exists, so it's.
And those are buildings that are very valuable to be using. If, you know, I mean, there's probably twenty-five apartments in there, that, that would be really good. And then there's probably a couple other buildings, but that's a good example. I mean, that's what the issue we have here is, is a money problem, is who's going to be the investor to do that? And when I was on the city council, we tried to buy a couple of those buildings and, you know, the guy didn't want to sell them to us.
So one thing Michael mentioned in a previous slide is, is what some cities do is vacancy fee or vacant building fee, where the city can take these vacant buildings and fine owners for not doing anything with them. And so that incentivizes them either to do something or to sell their building to someone who will do.
We tried that and it didn't work.
Well, the other piece of the puzzle is that we're not going to discuss tonight, but is a huge piece of the, by the end of this whole process that we're going to get to, so I'm trying to stay in the seven.
Thank you.
The one, one big piece that we will have to discuss is what you just brought up. We don't have the money to do this yet, but there are ways to raise that money. And let's not go into that discussion tonight, because let's first figure out what, let's, let's figure out what you want to do before we try to figure out how, because by knowing what you want to do, you know how much you need to raise. And it's not worth having a discussion about raising funds until you know what you're trying to do. So that's, that's the goal. Can we go back up a slide? This is the strategies. And so this gets into your question about, we're a city, we don't, we don't build a housing. So how can you help? Okay? One is the broccoli cost that I was talking about. That's your roads, your sewer, your gas, your electric costs, your utilities. Those will sink a project budget quicker than anything on, it's, it just, infrastructure and horizontal costs, like I said, there is no value added to a project of having a sewer line except that you can flush your toilet, right? But that, that is so, when you start adding in astronomical horizontal costs into a project budget, that just drives your cost per unit to a point of unaffordable. That's why you're seeing new subdivisions coming out with three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar homes, is because they are paying for that horizontal cost back, right? Leveraging matching funds with granting partners. So there is a House Bill twelve seventy-one, that, that grant is going to be due in November of next year. That's a half a million to a million dollar grant. That's going to have strings attached to it. That's going to have an eighty percent AMI or a one hundred and forty percent AMI attached to it. But that is probably the first time that, after me screaming for six years about horizontal infrastructure, the state is actually, DULLA is doing that. So let's not, let's not lose track of that. There is actually a huge funding source that we get through this process that we can be applying for a grant. Engineering and architecture, that's ten to twenty percent of a building cost. That's huge. So how, you know, you, you guys have, and Sky brought up, could we have architectural plans for ADUs?
Just pre-approved plans.
You know, that, that bill is good. That's ten, ten to twenty percent you're saving. It's a great idea. Also, by helping with architecture and engineering, what you do is you actually know what your price is at the end of it. So there's nothing worse than a project that comes in that has a conceptual plan and they haven't done their engineering and their architecture because they don't really know what the true cost is. When you do RFQs, if you do an incentive program, that you're going to be able to separate those two projects very quickly, and the people who have done their work and invested that money have had. You guys have talked about permit fees, paying them. All right, wish like, there's no shade over there.
Yep.
Can I? No. That, that's a great one, if the permit fees are big enough that they actually are restricting. I think when I originally came in, your tax fees are like five thousand bucks, is that right? I mean, that's, it's a drop in the bucket. But it helps if they do some type of affordability with the project. This is right here, when we talk about, when you actually start setting up a framework of a actual regional housing authority that lives and breathes this in your community every day, getting those first-time home buyers squared away and getting them financially ready is so huge. I can't tell you how many times I've had, I had someone come in and buy a snowmobile after they went through their first-time home buyer class and they're like, well, you're not going to build houses for another year anyways. I'm like, well, you just bought a twenty thousand dollar snowmobile, so I hope you can sleep on that in your bed. Because I mean, if they're not saving for that down payment, you're not setting them for success. But so many people just haven't had that education to what it actually takes to own a home.
Years ago, there was that program, there still exists, that SWOT equity program that they did some here in town and it was a developer, Alabosa, and I've worked with them directly on that. And it's still there and it did help keep that cost down.
Yeah, USDA has that, it's actually USDA has a SWOT equity program. That's a, that's a great one. Again, that program can be leveraged with vacant land that's ready to go. So are you able to, you know, are you able to connect that person with the piece of property and take land costs out? So that's the incentive for that, for that program. And then when we talk about the financial incentives, what we need to start thinking about is, if we're actually injecting cash into a project, it takes, just as a rough number, two hundred thousand dollars if we build our own unit, one unit. But if we inject two hundred thousand dollars and we get ten units with working with a private developer, is it worth it? And that's the threshold of where you guys are going to need to land on when you start talking about what is a true incentive program and what can a developer come back to you with. Like I said, the one thing I see here, and I keep going back to it, is if you were to do a competitive incentive program where you have multiple, these multiple bigger apartment complexes, and you, if you actually made them sharpen their pencils and say, what do I truly need to make this project move forward? And then, you know, you've got five different developers that respond and you only select two, it's going to be competitive. They're going to want that incentive. And so it's, how do you make it attractive enough to make them want, come to the table and build?
This project that you are working on in the eastern plains, did you have any problems getting people to go in? How many developers were interested in that?
We only had two. We had five originally, and then when we moved the groundbreaking to this coming season, we went to two. There's only two, there's only two with capacity. That was the big issue. Now, a lot of them said we'd build in twenty twenty-three, but that's, I'm preaching to the choir.
Were they local developers?
Nope.
Or might have applied from this range or whatever?
They're Oklahoma and Grand Junction.
Okay.
All right. Let's go down one, please, slide. And we've talked about this one. Was there any questions about, about these, these tools that keep affordability, deed restrictions, restricted covenants? You guys have all heard of deed restrictions and restricted covenants and rental agreements. Okay. All right, next slide. Last thing I want to talk about real quickly is, once, in the next five years, if you're successful, you're going to have an administrative backlog. And I'm going to speak for Sky here as being someone who tried to do it myself and build all the houses. You can't do it. You need to have a regional authority that is, once you actually get to who's, who's monitoring your deed restrictions, who's doing the lotteries for a pair of sale. And, and you do have, you do have a housing authority. I don't think, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm guessing that if I told them, went to the, the housing authority and said, you know, we're looking at you taking on lotteries and qualifications, they go, ah! Because they're, they're understaffed today, I'm sure. And so you would have to build up capacity, but you can use that existing framework to build that capacity within that organization. And they do so much more that you got to think about. They, they, they actually, this providing loan consultation, this energy assistance programming, there's lots of different grant funds that are out there to do the energy rehab, do the energies assessment. Those programs exist. Again, they're doing your lotteries and qualifying your applicants. And then they are doing two other big things. One is this property management, which they currently do, which is the source of revenue to keep them whole and viable over the long term. And then finally, they are the watchdog, right? They're making sure that any of these rental agreements, deed restrictions you put in place are being adhered to, so.
Do any of these, for the state or other, do any of them have, still have that down payment assistance program that was available years back?
Oh, yeah. And getting access to those funds and finding out who your regional provider is, especially when we start talking about homeownership build, is a huge piece of the puzzle.
The organization back fifteen years ago that offered that.
For the project in the southeastern plains, we're actually accessing our first-time home buyer funds out of an organization I agree with. There are, there are definitely funds for that. The state is the big thing that DULLA has stepped in to assist with that project out there.
Mike, do you have any questions or any concerns so far with these? I'm good.
Okay. All right. So I think we're, next steps. So, next slide, please. All right. So you have a sushi menu out in front of you. How am I doing up time? Seven to seven to six forty-five, what is the slide to go to? Um, six forty-five, I guess we have two, do we have two seven? Okay. There we have it. So in front of you, you have, you have first your sushi, sushi menu. And so, well, I'm like, tonight, and I'll collect these, and I'll shuffle them around so I don't know which council member put what on here. But I want you to just take a quick moment to get.
Do you have another coffee? Because I wrote on my.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another one.
I need another coffee. All right. So the feedback, I think, from tonight, and I don't want, you know, I think everyone's head is spinning, so tonight I'd like you to go through this, this list of options. Mark down which is your, maybe put one, two, three as your top. On goals, I think you can mark an X at whatever goals that sound attractive. And if you have an additional goal, please write it in below. As far as the programs that I talked about tonight, please put one, two, three, your top three that you want me to come back and talk a little bit more in depth about on policies. On policies. And then the same thing with zoning, which I don't think we really got into, we didn't really dive into tonight. You kind of touched on.
Yeah, and, and, you know, maybe with the zoning tools, that's something that I'm putting out the survey to the community to, to work through our zoning code based on that. And so that's something that we may be doing in parallel to what Mike is doing with us. It might be useful to Mike if, with the policies, if there's any that you just need more information on, to make a note of that, if you're not really sure where to prioritize it.
And then, and I can, our.
Can we email Councilman Goodall since he's virtual, so he gets one of these menus? Because he likes sushi.
That he does.
Councilman, I'll email you this right after the, right after the meeting here.
Well, for the sake of time, because I'm, I'm always, I always try to stay on task here. I don't want to go over seven o'clock. What I, what I can say is, the questions that I heard tonight were all spot on, and I think that there's a healthy skepticism in the room tonight, which I appreciate. Commissioner Goodall's comments about, you know, how are we actually going to stop talking and start doing? I love that. So, you know, let's, let's plan on coming back at another work session when I can get scheduled. And I'll bring back some more concrete discussion items around incentives, particularly. And you guys have given me a lot to kind of reflect on, to come back and bring some more, you know, some more solid examples of how certain things could be structured. And also giving your feedback on which ones you want to hear from tonight will also help me kind of prepare for that. Does that sound like a viable next step? And it sounds like I need to come sooner rather than later.
Bring more money with you next time.
There's not a lot out there, so. But I think that's, let's do that. I would encourage the council to go and click on those links that I provided you. They do provide a good amount of data. The last one on there, the House Bill seventy, or twenty-two, twelve seventy-one, that one is the incentive program that is, that's, that's the, that's the big one from the state right now. And that's kind of the ones.
Yeah, and that's definitely something we're going to plan to apply for, but exactly what it is we want to fund with it is going to take direction from you guys.
And it's not due till next fall, but.
Well, we can start working on that now.
Well, we have to start working.
Right, right, we can start working on it now, but, but what, but what we can do perhaps as part of our work together with you is give you some ideas, and then you can develop those ideas and turn them into precisely what we ask to fund with that Senate Bill twelve seventy-one. But it, it's potentially available to fund a really broad range of activities, including purchasing land.
Yeah.
For housing. So, so, you know, that's one of those big capital intensive type things that we may be able to get some outside money to, to get started.
The last thing I want to touch on is, because it's up here, is why I was suggesting a joint meeting with the commissioners. And there's, there's three things that I think that jump out at me that if we're going to be successful with certain things, that we, that we probably need to talk county commissioners because of regional things. One is the blight, the blight of property. They control tax sales. There's a, you'll read in the mayor's handbook on abandoned properties, to really be successful and putting a strategy together to go after tax sales and land properties, the two entities have to be talking and they have to have a solid strategy of how they work together to get those properties and what they do with them after. So that's the one, that's, that's under the policies. Two is when we talk about a regional tax or funding, that, you know, when those conversations go on, whether or not it's just a city tax or if it's a regional tax, is a really important discussion, as you guys know, if, if that is the step that you want to talk about, especially with short-term rental regulations, that was something, you know, the county tends to have those bigger properties. is a really important discussion, as you guys know, if, if that is a step that you wanna talk about, especially with short-term rental regulations, that was something. You know, the county tends to have those bigger properties that are short-term rentals as well. So it's always, it's always good to have that, that conversation with the commissioners now rather than at the last second. And the final piece of the reason that I would suggest at some point is if you are truly gonna look at a regional housing authority, keep it regional. Make it intentional, have that employee, have a board of city and county elected officials that control their job. Because remember that list of things, when you talk about home buyer assistance, when you talk about where the jobs are being created, especially with the mine being out in the county, it's important that they're a part of that discussion. But I think for this next one, let's continue the discussion with this group. But that's the reason that that's on there and I just wanted to address why I put that on there. All right.
Handing your paper, you flunked.
I got an A actually on mine.
Yeah.
Before we adjourn, are there any other items that we've talked about or that you may wanna bring up for future work sessions yet, if you don't know? Anything?
Uh, no, sir, not right now.
Well, I'd like to discuss code violations. Maybe if we could put something in there to the effect of, uh, habitual.
Habitual.
Yeah.
I like what Sky's talking about, taking a global look at our legis code with regard to that because it does affect the desirability of housing, where people wanna build, those kind of things. I think it's something that we should look at.
Yeah.
Right?
No, just what I talked about last time that we control and, uh, we need to sit down with Mr. Hamer, I think. We didn't, we kinda avoided him the last time we ended up with a lawsuit, so maybe we need to bring him in here and talk to him about what his priority is and if we can get it done. I think that's kind of important, especially after the paper tonight.
Mr. Goodall?
Since we're talking about housing, I was wanting to know if maybe, I know that you had a meeting with the mine people and they were curious about the space to create all the apartments. Did, did you find out anything on those? Are they able to rent any of them apartments, Mayor?
Haven't found out anything yet, but I think that might be a problem.
That's what I was curious and I was just curious if you had found anything else because it sparked my interest. They spoke to me about it and said they had a meeting with you, so. I mean, immediate solution for a few apartments, cause the families are struggling of the miners. They don't wanna live in hotels and it's creating a problem with employment, with employment up there. And so, you know, everything I have to, wanna discuss revolves around housing and we're having that discussion now.
So Rusty, one thing I've had, can be working on is putting together a list of vacant upstairs apartments in downtown. And, um, and so those things, those may be apartments that are not currently habitable, but maybe the mine could, mine or other, other interested parties could partner with the owners to fix them up and, um, and get those inhabited. So I can share that with you, um, probably tomorrow, once I put that together.
Fantastic.
Okay, the one thing, and I'm not sure if it may be in any of our codes right now, I've had a few calls from individuals, homeowners that live next to basically, some of whom several antique cars or vehicles that are just parked there and they're not, I mean, it looks like a junkyard rather than what it's supposed to be. And how do we approach that? Can we make that, where it's answered on the courts?
And then we also have a new house. It's a two-bedroom house.
Well, we've got our, uh, our vehicle.
That's what I'm telling you.
So we've started that process and have to be licensed. So we're moving on it. They gotta be licensed.
But, uh, we did, uh, we.
We're hearing two conversations at the same time right now online, so we can't really hear what's being said.
Is there anything else? Wally, was there something that you missed?
No, I was just saying that we couldn't hear what you all were saying because there's two conversations going on and we couldn't hear the question that you asked or the answer that Mike gave to you.
Okay. My, like I said, my question is what do we do with some of these people that have three or four or five or 10 antique cars parked in front of their, they've just been sitting there and they're not licensed. And of course, we've been talking about making sure they're licensed. And Mike was saying.
We, we just passed that ordinance and co-enforcement is working on getting around to all of them.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you for the interesting evening. Mike, thanks for coming down. We'll see you again.
So in the interim, if you have questions, send them to me and I'll run them to Mike.
Okay.
Get on the agenda here soon.
Yep, we'll be on the agenda again.